Welcome to the January 18th Racial Equity and Policing Commission meeting. I'm Chair Salazar Hall. This meeting will be an electronic meeting pursuant to the Chair's determination that conducting the meeting at a physical location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. The commission meeting will not have a physical location and all attendees will connect remotely. Members of the public may provide public comment by joining through Zoom and the link is available online. So, public meeting guidelines, of course, if there's any members of the public, they're welcome to speak. If you do not wish to have your name listed or you don't want to speak, that's fine, but know that we need to keep comments for your discriminatory language referring to a person or group based on their religion, ethnicity, nationality, race, color, descent, gender, sexual orientation, disability, age, or other gender identity factor. Items or comments that disrupt the meeting intimidate or other participants or that may cause safety concerns are not allowed. Do we have anyone available for public comment today, Moana, just to get an idea?
There's about five in that are attending from the public.
Okay.
They could raise their hand if they want to make any public comment.
We can start with open dialogue and give our public the chance to decide if they want to make any statements, but for now, do we have any open dialogue for tonight? Okay, seeing none, let's move to the public comments section, limited to 15 minutes. Do you have any members of the public who wish to make a comment or a statement? Okay, seeing none, and Moana, let me know if anyone does. We can always take public comments as we go, I think. We don't have enough for quorum tonight, so let's skip the approval and adoption of the December 2021 minutes and let's move to the Park Ranger program update. Kristin Riker with Salt Lake City Public Lands Director, will you please give us an update on this wonderful program?
Hi, everyone, thanks for having me tonight. Yeah, I'm happy to give everyone an update. Council did approve the park ranger funding that was requested through the ARPA funds, and so we have been feverishly working on putting together the parts and pieces of this program that we can at this time. The first thing that we've been really working on is the position descriptions, and we have finalized those and gotten those to council. We have, let's see, we have four position descriptions that are positions that we'll be hiring for. We have an operations level position, that'll be like a manager for the park ranger program. We haven't gotten grades back yet, the grade level from HR, we're still waiting on their approval on all of these, really. We have a park ranger supervisor, we have park ranger leads, park rangers, and we have one office facilitator. And so, as soon as we get those back, we will open up the operations manager position, and if there's anyone on this commission that is interested in serving on the interview committee, we would love to have you participate. Or if you know somebody who might be interested, please let us know. We're hoping for somewhere around the low 30 grade for that position, so it's a higher level management position. The reason that we want to start with hiring that position is so that they can help weigh in on the supervisor position, the leads, and the rangers. So that's, that's our, really our focus is to get those positions hired. In the meantime, we've been meeting with quite a few different folks to understand a little bit more how other people are managing their park ranger program. We've met with, well, aside from internally, the police department and 911 fire department, we've met with the city of Santa Maria, California, to talk about their park ranger program. We've talked to the city of Seattle to talk with them about their ranger program is all volunteer. It's hard, it's really hard to find somebody that has a park ranger program similar to what we're looking at, which is park rangers that are in the parks department that are not volunteer, do not carry guns, and their primary focus is education and training, programming, park and for park rule enforcement, that kind of thing. So, we're taking information from all these different places to try to cull together different ideas and processes and training ideas. We've also met with Boise, they had a really nice program for their park rangers. They also initially had theirs in the Parks and Recreation Department, and they moved it to the police department. They decided they wanted their park rangers to carry guns. We've met with, internally, we've met with compliance, with Damian Choi and Jorge Shmero to talk about how they issue citations, to think about whether we would like to issue citations or not. I think initially, we're leaning towards not issuing citations and more looking at being a presence in the park, a friendly face. After talking to Seattle and learning about their volunteer program, which is very strong program, they've been very successful with not issuing citations, obviously, they're volunteers, but, and being that, that person in the park that people can go to when they have concerns or issues or questions, directions, whatever it might be. So, leaning a little bit more that direction. We've also met with animal services, Salt Lake County Animal Services, one of the biggest issues in our parks is animal control, and they gave us a lot of really great ideas. They also offered to provide us with a proposal for hiring two more animal control officers in our parks, and this is just an idea, we're waiting to get a proposal from them, and if it's a reasonable, reasonable proposal, we'll bring it back to the mayor's office and council and see if that's something that they would like to pursue with some of this funding. It would probably reduce the number of park rangers that we have, but might also be really effective to have those animal control officers in the park on a more regular basis than they are now. We have meetings coming up with the ambassador program, we want to connect with them and talk to them about how they are managing their program in the city already and how we can work together. And then, I've also been in contact with a few different folks regarding location for park ranger offices, and this has been a real challenge for us. So, there's four locations, Fairmont Park is one of them, and I've talked to the folks that in the county for, to possibly use the natorium, and there's no space in the natorium, unfortunately, so that's out. We may end up getting a mobile office for the rangers. We also have talked about, we're reaching out to the RDA to see if the old firehouse might be an option for them to house in, at least for a while until that space is, is used for something different. The Jordan River Parkway, we are under construction for the Fisher Mansion Carriage House, and we will house park rangers there. We may have to have a mobile location at that site for a little while. Pioneer Park, right now, we haven't started construction of a park ranger office at that site, we do have some funding and we'd like to do that, so that'll probably be a mobile office as well. Let's see, so, so we're, we're, we're in the, oh, the other, the last place was Liberty Park, and I reached out to, to some folks there to see if they could be at the Chase, Chase Museum home, and they don't have space either, so we're looking at our maintenance yard for potential space for them for a mobile office. So, so that's still in the work, there's, there's, there's just, there's a lot of moving pieces here, and we've, we've reached out to fleet to try to order the vehicles that we need, those will take a while to come in, so there's a lot of different things happening, we really want to get this manager hired so that they can work full-time on this project instead of those of us who have a lot of other responsibilities in addition to this. So, once we get that underway, if there's anybody who would like to be a part of that interview process, we'd love to include somebody from the commission. And that's all I have for tonight, does anybody have any questions?
Kristin, what, what was the base pay for the park ranger? I think I missed that part.
Yeah, you know, it hasn't been determined by HR yet. We are hoping in the realm somewhere of 46, 80 an hour. So, that's about 95 to 97,000 a year.
And what was the background requirements?
Let's see, I can send you all the position descriptions, I do have that open, though. Let's see. Graduation with a bachelor's degree from accredited college or university in Parks and Recreation Management, Urban Planning, Criminal Justice, Emergency Management, or closely related field, or five years full-time experience in Parks and Recreation Management, Law Enforcement, Security Management, Emergency Management, or equivalent combination of education and experience, extensive eight-plus years' work experience related to the program. This one, it's going to be harder to fill because there's, because it's a higher level position, we're asking for quite a bit of experience, at least three years of leadership experience and supervision experience. Yeah, that's the gist of it, there's, there's other, you know, ability to work with others and communicate effectively, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. With that much of experience that you're asking for, I assume that you're also going to be recruiting outside of the state as well?
Absolutely, we'll do, we'll do a national recruitment and try to get the best person possible for the program.
And when you were speaking about animal control, the things that I noted, well, were you talking about animal control in a sense of leash audit, you know, what makes your dogs on a leash, or are you talking about strays, or are you talking about wild animals? What are some of the things there with animal control?
Well, probably all of the above, but the, the biggest problem we have in the park system right now is dogs off leash and running at large, and just making people feel uncomfortable in the, being in the park when dogs are running up to them, and, you know, people not cleaning up after their dogs, that's, that's the biggest issue that we have, and that is our number one complaint about our parks is dogs off leash.
So, if you have the situation where they're not issuing citation and that the biggest issue, how do you, how do you, you can manage that?
Animal control can issue a citation, so our rangers can call animal control and have them come issue a citation if needed. But we're hoping to get people to comply with our rules through, you know, education and talking to them and, you know, having a presence in the park, and, you know, most people will follow the rules if there's somebody there saying, hey, you know, put your dog on a leash, it's making other people feel uncomfortable, and just talking to people and being friendly is, is the idea. I mean, there'll certainly be cases when that won't work at all, and we'll have to call animal control, but that's the intent.
Thank you.
I like the approach that you're taking for education, and I think that's a great way to at least get started with this, and I think to leave room for changes if need be is a good idea as well. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
So, I just want to, oh.
Go ahead.
No, are you? I'm, I'm hearing the magnitude of work that you're putting into getting this off the ground, and I, I was looking forward to this update, and I do appreciate it a lot, and it's challenging to get a new program started with, with all the minutia and everything, so I'm, I appreciate the update, I'm excited for where you're going, I think that's a really interesting approach. Using, was related with those partners that you need to be successful for those few people who, who, who won't go along with a little friendly request, so I'm glad you've got all those balances in place, but my hat's off to you for the work that you're doing, because it's, it's a, it's an uphill climb, and I wish you well, and I do appreciate that update.
Thank you.
Another comment that I'd like to just make, Kristin, is that we need to make sure that these people are going to be safe and doing their job, so let's think about how we can ensure that that happens. It's okay to call the animal control to issue citations, but if the people are not safe themselves, then that's an issue we need to figure out. Thank you.
Absolutely, thanks.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it. Moana, can you send out an email to all the RepC members to see if anyone would be interested in joining the hiring committee? Kristin, when would you like a response by?
Let's see. It will, will probably, you know, we'll put the, the position out, it's going to have to be out for at least a couple of weeks, if not longer, and so, I would say, we will start, we'll hope to start doing interviews by the first of February, so we'd need to know by then.
Okay, can you send that out, Moana, asking for people to respond by end of this month? Awesome, well, thank you, Kristin, that's really exciting.
Yeah, thanks so much, all of you, appreciate it.
Please let us know if you need anything from us, we're happy to help.
Thanks.
All right, the next on the list is goals and priorities for 2022. We've touched on this in past meetings, but we, we should probably really get down to what, what goals we want to tackle, which ones want to prioritize for 2022. So, we have Commissioner McDonald and Commissioner Davis, who head up the other two subcommittees. So, commissioners, do you have any thoughts on what you would like to prioritize from your subcommittees for this year?
I, I can just add that we, I haven't had a chance to meet with my subcommittees yet to formulate the, the goals that we will have, so I will try to have something during our next meeting.
The training commish, committee is interested in, first of all, taking a look at what progress we made on those recommendations that we made regarding training, and then after that to determine what other things we need to focus on for the year. The chief gave us a great report last time, and we know that some of those things are in process, but we need to know where we are with them, and then we can decide where we go from there. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, and I, I think this will be a reminder for everyone to please fill out that doodle poll so we can get an idea of when to hold these meetings. I think five people have filled out the school safety subcommittee doodle poll, I don't know where your two committees stand, Commissioner Davis and Commissioner McDonald, if you've had a lot of response on those.
I think one from both of their commissions have, when I checked it right before the meeting. So, we'll need, oh.
Yes, Chief Brown.
I don't know how to raise my electronic hand, sorry. Hey, I would ask one, one favor of the commissioners, Tuesday nights are city council nights for us, and many times we're, we're engaged with the council and did different presentations, if at all possible, could we move any rep commission meetings off of Tuesday? That would make it a lot easier for us to attend and not have so many meetings backed up that evening. Thank you.
I'll also note that it's a, it's a school district meeting nights, too, so Superintendent Gadsden would have a difficult time attending, or any other of the school board members if they're interested in attending, but I think there, was there a doodle poll that we did for this to land on this night?
Yeah, and that was the, this was the, I think this was the second, yeah, this was the highest one, and then we had another one that I think was on a Thursday.
Yeah.
Those were the two highest that I had, but we. I will defer to the chair and, but whatever the largest amount of people can attend a meeting, that was my, how I was just taking from the doodle poll we had.
Okay.
I, I know for me, those things are, okay, moving it to Thursday, I, I don't know what I put on the doodle poll, I probably just checked all the boxes, but I, I know I'm good with those things. We probably can't make a motion on it because we don't have a quorum, but I, I'm good with those things personally.
It looks, it looks like for your subcommittee, which I'm a part of, that everyone has checked Tuesday so far, but I, I like Wednesday, Thursday, I can do Thursday also. Commissioner McDonald.
Yeah, and for our commission, I think we could do Wednesday or Thursday, so either one.
So, speaking of 2022 goals, my goal is to meet everybody in the first quarter. I think you all don't really exist. I missed every single chance, and I feel like it's, you know, some kind of virtual land that I come to and then go away from, so, yeah, got to figure it out a way.
Yes, Chief Brown.
I did it, wow. I'm with Commissioner Benari, I'd love to meet with everybody, I hope we can get past COVID and sometimes sit down face to face and have a nice meeting, or have that barbecue we've never had. But anyway, hey, I'd like to introduce some, some members of our team and, to the commissioners, I, I know you've met Chief Van Dongen, and he's going to be the chief that'll be assigned to the training subcommittee, so I believe Commissioner Davis, you'll be working with him quite a bit, we're going to try to divide and conquer, and then I, I know you know Captain, formerly Captain Scott Morkos, but he's been promoted to deputy chief as well, and he's going to oversee the policy group for us, and so, Commissioner McDonald, you'll be working with Scott quite a bit, he just got back from the National Academy, the FBI, so he's, we're glad to have him back, and glad to have him promoted to a chief, and then Chief Brian Purvis will be working with Chair Salazar Hall on the school safety subcommittee. And then, of course, there's me and Avet, we will try to make every meeting we possibly can, and then Avet's got some officers lined up to, to be on those subcommittees as well, but I wanted to make those introductions and let you know, this is the team that you'll be working with, and we're excited to, to move forward in 2022 and make some great progress.
Great, great.
Fantastic. So, Moana, can we even, can we move the, the meetings without making a formal motion or having a formal vote?
Is Allison still here? I, I think that it should, it probably, I don't see anywhere in our written or any other guideline that says it, it has to be on a certain day or we have to move, it's just that the majority of people to know that the date is moving, I'm just afraid to move it by next February, do you want, I, I think what would be helpful for me is maybe contacting everybody, and I can help support this. Allison, do you know anything in terms of the guidelines, so we can move it to a Wednesday or Thursday?
You know, I can't think off the top of my head of something that would forbid you from doing that.
Yeah.
Especially if, if you meet the open and public meeting requirements, which is to announce the meeting 48 hours or what, or I don't know, remember, but it.
Just three days.
Then I think that's fine, and if you could update your websites as well, I think that would be very helpful for the public.
Well, then maybe, Moana, let's take this one, put it to email and see if, and to your phone calls to see if Thursdays, if there's a specific Thursday that works better for the majority of the group. Thursdays I leave open, we, we have a, usually in the non-pandemic times, my firm has, has a social hour on, on Thursday afternoons, which is why I keep my Thursday afternoons free, but I'd be willing to forego that for this. Like I purposely don't schedule mediations or trials on Thursdays if I can help it.
And is 5:30 still the best, or we just maintain that 5:30 out?
Yeah, I think 5:30 is probably best so people can do their day jobs and still come to this.
Okay, I'll put it to email just so that, I mean, the majority of you are here, I just want to make sure that they, they know, and then I will give, I always do it three to four days before, anyway, the meeting. So, we'll have proper notice and we'll be in, in within the guidelines for open, open public, open meetings, so I'll send that out.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then to update people on the school safety subcommittee, we have not met yet, which is why we need, really need to get people to fill out the doodle polls so we can get meeting dates and times established. I met with Superintendent Gadsden this morning and had a really wonderful conversation with him. I let him know where the RepC has, is at with our goals and priorities for school safety in Salt Lake City schools. We are right in line with what his goals are, and I spoke with Chief Brown afterwards, and it sounds like the chief's goals for his officers are right in line with what Dr. Gadsden wants and what we want, so I'm pretty excited to have some good stuff come out of our, our recommendations and to have them put into practice and to really benefit both the kiddos and Salt Lake City School District and, and the officers. So, I think it's a start of a lovely relationship.
And the, the, were you going to give an update that there's, they soon will have, we're hoping soon?
Yes, so we did interview for the city FTE, the Education Advisor FTE, we did those interviews, was it last week, I believe, we sent our top two up to the mayor last week, and I have yet to find out if the mayor has made a decision yet on which one to hire. But we're very hopeful the top two candidates, I think, will do a fantastic job with establishing relationships, helping out with the MOU, working not just with Salt Lake City School District, but also with the University of Utah, with Salt Lake Community College, and really focusing on those outcomes for, for young ones. So, Moana, if you know anything about if mayor's made a decision, you'd probably know before me.
Yeah, when I know, I'll send, do you want me just to send that over email when I find out, I'll forward it to her, they should be, when they announce it, so I'm just keeping my, I'll, I'll keep in contact with everybody who's hiring.
Perfect. Yeah, I don't know when the mayor was going to be interviewing the top two that we sent up to her, so that was the, the big unknown, we sent ours up, and I know they went up that same day that we, we finished our interviews, but I don't know when she was able to get it into her scheduled interview, the, the two, top two candidates. So, we're hopeful with that, too, because then that would really give the RepC a lot of voice in some of those conversations with, with the PD in the Salt Lake City School District and renegotiating the MOU. All right, any other updates from either of the two subcommittees? Then, I think there are two pending applications for the RepC, we're going to have to hold off on those until we have a quorum, so probably next time.
Okay, I'll put that on.
Commissioners, now, that's. Commissioners now, that two applications, that's great. Do, how close are we to being full? Do you, do you know offhand, Moana?
The two that were said and one is. I'm forgetting who it was. Commissioner Sumato was reviewing them. I think Commissioner McDonald, I also sent them to you, the two. We only could pick one of those two because the other two positions that are open have to be. Someone who's sixteen to twenty two, according to the ordinance for youth. So we only, there has to be four on the commission that are youth representative in that group. The one that I did see in that, one, one of the, both of them, but one of them was in Salt Lake City. And I can send it to the rest of the group as well, that I thought would be a really good fit. From Rose Park and I'll send that out. I don't know if Commissioner McDonald has anything to add.
I don't have anything to add. I was just going to let you know that I did fill out the.
Oh, you. Okay, I'll go review. I'm sorry, Commissioner McDonald, I haven't had a chance to look at.
Okay, uh, do we have any other more comments, public comment? Because I think we've run through our agenda. Go us, we're, we're efficient.
All right. I move adjourn.
Can I? I was going to ask something really quickly. I was just going to say, I was going to send an email so that I can get with Scott. Perhaps and, and we can just talk about some of the things that, that he's going to be, be doing with, with policy. And I'll send you my email and, and phone number contact.
Yep, that would be great.
And whoever hasn't filled out the doodle poll, please do so with the remaining meeting time. That would be awesome. And then I can send those immediately to the group so that everybody knows and we'll just pick a day that's not Tuesday.
Yes, because then, you know, city council members can also attend these if they wanted to.
Yeah, sounds good.
That'd be, that'd be helpful.
And I was just thinking too, that we don't put the public in a, in a bind of which meeting to attend and. Not saying our meeting isn't important, but it probably doesn't rank with city council. So be a way that we can get more access to the public.
Good. I'll send that, those out immediate in the morning. Thank you all.
Okay, well, Commissioner Davis made him, oh yes, Chief Brown. You're on mute.
He can't do the electronic hand and he can't determine a way from, hey, I would like to say something either. Gee.
You're killing us. All right. Commissioner Davis made a motion to adjourn. Does anyone, is anyone against adjourning for tonight?
I second the motion.
Perfect, all right. Seeing no opposition, we'll close the meeting for tonight. Thank you everyone for attending. Fill out the doodle poll. Fill out the doodle poll, or I will deny you Girl Scout cookies.
I, I know that that's, I'm probably the only one on here who hasn't done that and I'll make sure to get that.
All right, thank you everyone. Please stay safe out there. Please, please, please. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.